Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our April 13 Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get rolling here. Let's get started by reading our roll, please, Denise.
Council members Erickson, Jensen, Kylie,
Here.
Knightzert,
Here.
Selberg,
Here.
Sale,
Here.
Starr,
Here.
Recky.
Here.
All right. With us tonight to give our invocation, we welcome back Dr. Ron Todingham from Sioux Empire Baptist Temple. Ron, thanks for being here again. I'd ask you to rise for that invocation and stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I always take a moment to thank all of you. I've traveled enough. I've been in enough cities, enough states where coming home is wonderful. Thank you for all you do for the city. I don't know if you get tired of hearing me say that?
Never.
I'm gonna say it every time I come. Thank you. Our Father, thank you tonight for your blessings to us, blessings we don't deserve. I pray that you'd bless the city council in all the things that they have to do, and from north to south, east to west, and all the different sides of issues they have to deal with. I pray that you'd hover over them, give them guidance in everything, but mostly they might please you in all the things they do. Bless us tonight in a very special way. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank Dr. Todingham for leading us in that invocation tonight. We'll move on to item four, which is our consent agenda. Look for any changes or motions there.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen. Counselor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull items number one and sixteen and seventeen, or sub-items number one and sixteen and seventeen.
All right. One, sixteen, seventeen pulled. Any other changes or items to see pulled, council, from consent? All right. Hearing none, let's take a vote on the motion to approve this agenda, then.
Council members Erickson, Yes. Jensen,
Yes.
Kylie,
Yes.
Knightzert,
Yes.
Selberg, Sale,
Yes.
Starr,
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Move on to item eleven. It's our regular agenda. Look for a motion there.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Erickson and seconded by Jensen to approve our regular agenda. Any discussion on the regular agenda tonight? All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote on that, please.
Council members Erickson, Yes. Jensen,
Yes.
Kylie,
Yeah.
Knightzert,
Yes.
Selberg,
Yes.
Sale,
Yes.
Starr,
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. So as we move forward with our regular agenda, just want to review public input for our agenda items. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only, and during general public input at the end of the meeting, comments will be no more than three minutes per person. And so with that being said, we'll move on to our first item, item twelve.
The consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. The consent agenda items that were pulled. Yeah, we'll start with subitem one, I believe it was.
Actually, thank you, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
We'll read it into record, and then we'll give you the floor. Go ahead, Denise.
Item one is Parks and Recreation Furnish Landscaping Wood Mulch to Award a Bid Pricing Attach. The Testman Company to Establish Pricing.
All right. Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess I had two questions for the department. One, it seems interesting we're buying wood chips with all the wood chips we're doing. I know the difference between cedar and, you know, we're not able to use some of that. And then I'm interested in just because it's one of those bids that we only got one bid on it. So is there just not that many people who are interested in bidding on that project? But I guess those are where the two areas that I was heading towards, if someone wants to address that.
All right. Good evening, Kelby.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Kelby Maris with Parks and Recreation. Yeah, the landscape wood mulch is a different product than what we are producing through our Emerald Dashboard Response Plan. The land share of all of those chips that are being produced from that response plan are going to poit and being used within the ethanol plant. They're being ground in such a way that they don't, they don't form together like the landscape mulch that we're purchasing, and they also don't have the same aesthetics. And the last thing that I would mention is that it's, they're also not being ground to a, to the size small enough that if the larvae is actually in that wood, we would then be spreading the Emerald Dashboard to places in which we would use that wood waste. As far as the number of bidders, we have publicly bid this several times, reached out, police finance reached out to five different vendors and only received one response. You can tell from the bid that we do actually purchase quite a sizable amount, and actually we do get truckloads of bales of mulch. And one, it's advantageous for us just in having it all in one site, and also in the bidding environment, too, just the price of it. It's cheaper for us that way.
Is some of the demand, if I can, Mayor, is some of the demand with the trees we're replacing that is where we're using a lot of this mulch, or how do we?
We use it in landscape areas. So landscape areas like around Carnegie, City Hall, the city center. Actually, seventy-four bales are used just in the downtown area and streetscape and areas like that. Of course, there's McKinnon Park and Tud Hill Park and other formal landscape areas that we have across the park system that we use this mulch in. Other areas, some of the areas that we actually do use some of that EAB mulch would be like under the interstate at I-29 at 12th Street, for an example. Takes an enormous amount of material at that location, and that's a great spot for some of that, that wood waste.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Is there anyone from the public who wants to speak on this item? All right. Counselors, look for a motion on this.
I'd move to approve that subitem one.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Starr, seconded by Sale. Any discussion on that? All right. Hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Erickson, Yes. Jensen,
Yes.
Kylie,
Yes.
Knightzert,
Yes.
Selberg, Sale,
Yes.
Starr,
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Okay. That passes eight to zero. Subitem sixteen from consent agenda. Next, please.
Item sixteen is Planning and Development Service Housing Agreement for No Interest Loan for a Multi-Family Tax Credit Development Project. Vineyard Heights Limited Partnership, $200,000.
Counselor Starr.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm just, I would like an update of the project and roughly where it's at, and this is how we normally handle in a no-interest loan type of process. So maybe just, just a description of the project.
Yep. It is a sixty-two unit development, and when we work with tax credit projects, it's a costello, or a costello project, we typically do one or two things. We either put a nominal amount in and they use that because they have points for participation in the application, or we invest a large amount like this. And in return, in this particular project, there's a total, we were able to purchase the price down to get one additional thirty percent AMI unit, one additional forty percent AMI unit, and to convert thirteen, sixty percent down to fifty percent. And so there's a, the total mix is thirty-seven units at fifty percent, twenty-five in that fifty to eighty.
What are the terms? How quickly is that repaid?
It's a thirty-year, no interest.
And what's the total project?
Um, I don't have that cost with you. I'm sorry. I can tell you, we had $200,000 in. The Housing Development Authority had a million dollars in home funds for a loan, and then six million dollars in tax credits. So I'm guessing it's in that eight million.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff while we got him up here? All right. Anybody from the public want to speak on this one? Look for a motion on it. Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale to approve this item. Any discussion, council? All right. Let's take a vote.
Council members Erickson, Yes. Jensen,
Yes.
Kylie,
Yeah.
Knightzert,
Yes.
Selberg, Sale,
Yes.
Starr,
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
That passes eight oh, and we'll move to item, item seventeen pulled from consent agenda.
Item seventeen is Facilities Management. The Link Triage Center Upper Level Design Amendment to Professional Services Agreement. The Shimmer Associates, Inc., and that's $33,300.
Counselor Starr.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question primarily was is, as we move into the second level of the building, what are we designing it for? How do we know what the need is? It's hard to engage in design services. I guess I'm looking for what we're thinking we would use that second level of the project for.
Good evening, Alicia.
Good evening. Alicia Koloris, City Health. Yes, thank you for the question. So for the second level design, we were allocated some funding from the state of South Dakota. Based on discussions with the project team, we would like to operate the facility for a few months to understand the highest demand for that facility. So this initial contract that has come before you is really to shore up some areas that would not be involved in a complete remodel of second floor. It's really to look at things like office space, public restrooms, things like that. I think once we have an opportunity to understand the level of detox, the level of observation patients, and also acute care patients, then we'll be in a much better position to come before you with a full design of what second level would look like.
Other questions for Alicia?
I do if
Go ahead.
No, no. I'm, I'm confused then of what we're spending thirty thousand on then. I mean, we're kind of looking at what we've already done, but we want to wait until we know what the demand is gonna be, but we're, it just, I guess I haven't hired an architect in a long time. I don't know how far thirty-three thousand goes, but it's kind of a chicken or egg type of thing, I guess, is the way you're describing it of how, what we are doing. I mean,
Right. The architect fees will not go to any areas that would be involved in a major redesign. It's for the parts of the second floor that would not be involved in a design. So there are some office spaces. There are some public restrooms and things like that. So this would cover architect fees as well as costs that it would take to bid the project, as well as manage any future construction if that were to be included and approved later by the Link Board, as well as the council.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Alicia. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? All right. Can I get a motion on it, please? Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Jensen and seconded by Kylie. Any discussion here, council? All right. Hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Erickson, Yes. Jensen,
Yes.
Kylie,
Yeah.
Knightzert,
Yes.
Selberg, Sale,
Yes.
Starr,
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Move on to item twelve, please.
Second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Shortening the time periods for districting commission action pursuant to section 6.02(c)(6) of the city charter sponsors Council members Knightzert and Selberg.
Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As a review from last week when I spoke at first reading, the primary objective of this, obviously, is to change the charter timeline, which is permissible by the charter, the districting timeline, which is permissible by the charter. The short of it is that we will, we don't expect to have census numbers by, until September 30th of this year. Normally, we would have expected them by the end of March, beginning of April, but obviously, that hasn't happened. So what this ordinance does is it changes two things. The first thing it changes is the time period for submitting the final report to the city council. So as the charter reads right now, it's not less than nine months prior to the next general election, which it would be, which would be July of this year. This ordinance changes that to not less than four months, so it moves it back to December. The other item that it changes is the time between the public hearing and the time that the act, the item can actually be submitted to the council, that final report submitted to the council. That's changed from not less than thirty days to not less than ten days. As I mentioned last week, the amount of time for the public to comment remains the same. So a thirty-day notice is provided for comments, and it culminates basically on the thirtieth day with a public hearing to take a look at the districting plan that the commission comes up with. Subject to your questions. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Good evening.
Good evening. It's Kaderisman, Sioux Falls. It is extremely disappointing that the census has taken so long, and it's not gonna be till September. It has nothing to do with you guys. You're, that's out of your control completely. I blame it on the last president, to tell you the truth, and he drugged his feet on a lot of stuff. But I don't believe that we should be redistricting anything with, with no data. And I understand the ordinance looked at it. You gotta do things in a certain period of time. I get it. You can't change that. It's kind of stuck in stone. My suggestion is to follow the rules and not having the data. I don't really believe our population is what it is. I think it's either a lot higher, or it's a lot lower than what we've been saying. I think that the districting commission can meet for about ten minutes and leave things just the way they are. And the simple fact is, it's because we don't have the data. And I don't know how a districting commission is gonna redistrict based on averages when they don't have the census data. Now, my wholeheartedly suggestion would be to stop it altogether, but you can't do that because city ordinance requires you to do this. So my suggestion to the districting committee, because you guys are not that, is to leave it as is. Don't change anything. And when we get good census numbers, you think we can revisit this. I just don't know how we're gonna redistrict the city without any data. It just doesn't make any sense. It'd be like a doctor doing surgery on your knee before he did an X-ray or a scope on it. Oh, it is, once we get in there, we'll figure it out. No, that's not how it works. So my suggestion is to follow all the rules. District commission, don't change anything. Meet for ten minutes, make the decision, and move on.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Tom or the presenting sponsors on this item? All right. Seeing none, look for a motion here.
Move to approve. Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen to approve item twelve. Any discussion here, council? Counselor Knightzert?
Maybe just for clarification, what, what would happen, well, will you be doing anything without census data?
We will not, the commission will not make a recommendation without census data. So that's obviously the critical path. However, I will say that the commission will meet by their choosing in June to kind of go through some of the, using housing estimates to just kind of war game some different scenarios. But they cannot present a plan to the city council unless it's contingent and use, unless they use census data, which would be available by the end of September. Also, just want to remind the council that we are not the only ones in this. I do agree, it's a predicament. Every jurisdiction throughout the country, most jurisdictions throughout the country have some sort of legislative redistricting process that they have to go through. So they're under an equal crunch just as well. But we anticipate by doing sort of an exercise in June, it'll give them a leg up come census figures availability, so that they could go through the process a little more efficiently.
And then finally, obviously, who this really matters to is number one, the voter, so they know what precinct they're in. And number two, those who may want to run for election for a city council or a mayoral seat. What date are you projecting that you would have, that people would know what, what the, what the new changes are? And then when you bring that, when that comes to us, when we approve it that night, is there also a first reading to also change the districts by ordinance? And so, I mean, what's the timeline?
So the timeline that we're looking at right now is mid-December. The actual date's December 13th, but the proceeding, the next available council meeting is December 7th. So that's the latest. We would want to see that provided to the city council. And just as a point of clarification, the council does not approve the districting commission's plan, but the council does have the ability within 21 days to reject it. And like you said, we will do a corollary action, and that's to change the precinct boundary, or the precinct designations through a first and second reading. That is through ordinance.
So as of right now, it'd be locked in by the end of this calendar year. People would know. Okay.
As long as we have the census figures by the end of September.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Other discussion, council, on this? All right. Let's take a vote then on the motion to approve item twelve.
Council members Erickson, Yes. Jensen,
Yes.
Kylie,
Yes.
Knightzert,
Yes.
Selberg,
Yes.
Sale,
Yes.
Starr,
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero. Move to item thirteen, please.
First reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Providing supplemental appropriations, general transfer to sales use tax fund, ten, ten million, six hundred fifty thousand. Parks, six million, six hundred fifty thousand. Highway and streets, four, four million. Health, five hundred thousand. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. Sponsor, Mayor.
Good evening, Sean.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to come forward and speak on behalf of the city and a request for some supplemental appropriations for the Sioux, for various projects that are encapsulated as part of the Sioux Falls For All Initiative. This has been discussed at an informational several weeks ago, as well as in conversations that we've had with you, as well as various other informational that I've had on the particular projects. So I won't be spending a lot of time tonight speaking about the projects themselves, because they've been talked about quite a bit in previous, in previous meetings. What I will speak just in general, to kind of summarize all the projects that are going to be involved as part of this request, and then I also will walk you through the ordinance itself, because the mechanics of it are a little different than some of the other supplemental appropriations that you have seen before you in the past. First of all, just to kind of reiterate what we had discussed when we introduced the Sioux Falls For All Initiative. Firstly, this is really focused on timely investments for the, for the residents of Sioux Falls. We're aligning the one-time funds that we received through the local government assistance program in 2020, and being able to deploy those and invest those in important projects for our community that will both enhance the quality of life, but also enhance the community from an economic development perspective in terms of infrastructure. The really things that we were looking at in prioritizing the things that were brought forward were things that were leveraging private investments and contributions. We were looking to maximize the return on investment in terms of quality of life and economic development, and we were looking at strategically strengthening the financial integrity of the city and its various funds, something that we've done previously in terms of utilizing some of these funds for prepaying debt last year and discussions that will be ongoing relative to the entertainment tax fund in the future as well, and then promoting equity and accessibility for residents to quality of life amenities. And in particular, two projects that really highlight and showcase this being the Hayward Park master plan improvements, as well as the inclusive playground that's being proposed as part of the Jacobson Plaza at Falls Park. This, we're bringing this forward as a multi-phased approach. This is the first phase of deploying and investing some of the resources that have become available to us and bringing it forward for your consideration. Just a quick summary for those that this is fair, this might be new to in the audience. We received $47.7 million in local government assistance funds. We utilized $25 million of that to prepay debt back in 2020, and then $500,000 was reallocated back to internal service funds for which different PPE and COVID-related expenses incurred, which left $22 million yet to be obligated. As part of this phase one of this project, we are proposing $11.2 million in a supplemental appropriation toward the list of projects here that will be on the next slide, with the remaining balance left over from those assistance dollars of approximately $11 million, which should be available for supplemental appropriations in the future. The list of projects that were discussed with you previously, the first one being Jacobson Plaza, which includes an inclusive playground and a refrigerated ice ribbon, which is proposed to be constructed at Falls Park. It includes a $2 million contribution from the city and a $2 million contribution from the Jacobson Plaza, or excuse me, the Jacobson family. And that gifting agreement is the next item on the agenda. I know there are some representatives, both from the Community Foundation, as well as the family in the audience today, and would be available for questions. The Hayward Park Master Plan Improvements, which includes a proposed spray park, a dog park, and open green space and playground improvements at Hayward Park, which is on the west side of the community, for a $2.25 million contribution from the city and a $200,000 that would be proposed to be raised by leaderships of Sioux Falls, as well as promising futures to assist with playground enhancements. The third item is for the African Exhibit Expansion at the Great Plains Zoo. The proposed contribution from the city is $1.4 million. That would leverage $6.7 million approximately of private contributions that have already been raised and would be utilized toward the project. The fourth parks-related project is the River Greenway for $1 million, which would be utilized for the design of the proposed Phase Three River Greenway along the Sioux Steel Development in downtown Sioux Falls. The, there's a highway and streets request for $4 million, which would allow for arterial street expansion and for enhancement of projects to support economic development in the community. And then the last one that was added to the list, and it was based on what Counselor Selberg had brought forward at the informational, and which we had been in discussion for quite some time, is the Operation Hope Fund, which would allow for a one-time funding to be vested with the Community Foundation at some time in the future, and would be utilized in conjunction with the Triage Center for next-level care to support the transition of people from that immediate care within the Triage Center to secondary care with other, that would help to eliminate some of the barriers that people would have to seeking mental health and addiction services. So the total city contribution would be $11.15 million as part of this appropriation ordinance. Private contributions would be $8.9 million. I would always also point out, I failed to mention, there are several members of the Zoo Board that are also in attendance here tonight, as well as the Zoo Director, Becky DeWitt, who is, who would be available for questions should you have additional questions as part of this appropriation recommendation. I do want to walk you through the ordinance because of the fact that the, the local government assistance dollars were received into our general fund. Most of these are capital projects, all but the last item on, on the list, which is the Operation Hope Fund, which is more of an operating or a general funded item. So the first step of what we would have to do is transfer the funds from the general fund and appropriate them over to the Sales and Use Tax Fund. The total amount of that transfer is $10.65 million, so I wanted to break that down as to how we come up with that $10.65 million. It's the city's portion of the contributions for each of the four parks-related projects, as well as the arterial street expansion for $4 million. Then the second portion of that appropriation ordinance is that we have to appropriate them out of the Sales and Use Tax. So it's a duplication of the appropriation, very similar to what we had to do when we paid down debt back in 2020. So the first portion of that is for $6.65 million, and this is for the capital projects related to parks. And then a separate appropriation is made for the $8.9 million that we would expect to receive to help fund these in terms of private contributions. We would need to appropriate those funds as well, but they would be funded by the gifts and the private contributions that would be received from this, to the city. The third item on the appropriation ordinance is for highways and streets, and that again would be from the Sales and Use Tax Fund for the amount of $4 million. And then the final appropriation listed on the one before you is for the Health Department. It's from the general fund, so it does not need to be transferred to Sales and Use Tax Fund. It will, it would be placed into the Health Department's budget. It would be appropriated to there and be held there as a placeholder and available for utilization in the future. However, it would hold there until an agreement can be drafted. When we had the informational a while back, Counselor Selberg talked about the idea that we would work with the South, or the Sioux Falls Community Foundation and likely have an agreement with them, because they are the fiduciary agent currently for the Triage Center, and then ultimately working with the Triage Center as the, the project board, as well as Avera as provider, in determining how the funds would be allocated and for which purposes. So that is something that would come to you in the future and would be subject to council approval as an agreement. But this would simply just set aside the funds into the Health Department for use at that time. With that, I also, we also have an attendance Director Carney and Director Cotter, both from Parks and Rec and from Public Works. They can answer any specific questions you may have remaining on any of the projects that are being brought forward. I will, just wanted to say that we have appreciated the conversations that we've had with council since last December in regard to these projects. We hopefully had answered many of your questions, but if there are any outstanding, we're happy to answer those at this time, and we appreciate your support.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to any of these items tonight, please come on up. Please come on up.
Scott Erspen, Sioux Falls. This one's a head-scratcher. Somebody I was talking to the other day, I said, you know what this is like? It's like when you're driving your car down the road and someone hits you and they damage your fender. And that person has car insurance. And their insurance company says, go get some bids. Get your fender fixed. You go out and get three bids on it. Insurance company says, we'll, we'll pay bid B. They give you a check for fifteen hundred dollars, fix your fender. You take the money, go down to the bank, you cash it, and you walk over to Carl's TV and buy yourself a big screen TV with it. That's what this is. We took COVID money, which is supposed to be spent on specific things, health, housing, and some of that's in there. And we're spending it on the zoo, parks. This is a prime example of failed leadership. Real leaders would have looked at the rules, would have taken the money, and would have said, this is what we need to spend it on. And it had nothing to do with African lions or water parks. Has to do with prioritizing what a community needs. Like I said earlier in the informational, we have people screaming in this town for affordable housing, and we're taking COVID money, which you can spend on housing. And what are we doing with it? Not spending it on housing. And how much was the council involved with this? That's the other question I have. I thought you guys controlled the purse strings. But it seems like over the past few years, those purse strings have been cut, thrown in a burn barrel and burned. It seems like the mayor's office and his accountants and directors are running the budget show here. How much were you guys involved? I can't even remember the last time you had a working session. Were you involved at all with this? Or was this just handed to you and said, this is what we're going to spend the COVID money on? And lastly, to be honest with you, if you look at the federal rules with this money, you might even be breaking the law. But that's a whole other ball of wax, just to let you know.
Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? All right, no one. We'll move into some discussion, councillors. You got any questions for not only Sean, but maybe any of the members who are here represented tonight, where these appropriations might be allocated? Councillor Knightser, start with you.
For the operational fund piece, which would be the, the Health Department item, normally that would turn back at the end of the calendar year if it's not, if it's not expended. Would you have to bring forward some actions to essentially move that over or put it into a fund at the community foundation, take some action? Otherwise, it'll revert?
Good question. So we anticipate that we can, the, the, we fully anticipate the, the agreement would be brought forward to the council yet this year. So one of the reasons for vesting the, the funds with the community foundation is exactly what you point out when it's an operating fund type item. You have to reappropriate it every year, and this is meant to, to hopefully last over several years to support some of those mental health transition type of barriers. And so by bringing it not only to the community foundation, it, it puts it into an agent that can hold the funds over a period of time and disperse them as needed as those come forward. But also, on the, at the same time, the Sioux Falls Community Foundation is also the fiscal agent for the Triage Center. And so it's, it serves a couple of purposes from that standpoint. So we do, I don't expect we'll have to reappropriate it again because this should be, the agreement should be drafted by the summer at, at the latest, hopefully.
Okay, and then my other question would be, I believe a few of these private contributions, the money's probably already in the bank. It's already there, it's committed. There's at least one, maybe two, that have some fundraising continuing to go on, and they're getting there. But do, do you know where that's at? And if, if they're going to hit the goal? Or if it's going to change things if they don't get there?
So what I can speak to, so the, the fundraising is underway in regard to the playground improvements and so forth, enhancements. That would be in addition to the Hayward Park improvements and part of that project. So I believe that portion is underway. The, as far as the Jacobson Plaza agreement, that agreement is the next item on the agenda. So that, that needs to be effective before or prior to the, the city being able to receive the funds. And that kind of spells out the, the process and procedures for receiving those funds as part of the construction of that project. And then I probably am going to defer to Becky, if she would like to speak a little bit on the zoo. I know most of them are raised, but she can speak to that.
Great.
Good evening, Becky.
Good evening, thank you for having me tonight. And I just want to thank you again for your time and your consideration of this very impactful allocation of funds for the project. We are sitting with these funds.
Becky, can you introduce yourself for those who maybe don't know you?
Sure, absolutely. So Becky DeWitt, CEO of the Great Plains Zoo and the Delbridge Museum. Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. Go ahead.
So as I was saying, we do have the campaign funds raised at this time. They have been in the process of being fundraised for quite some time, even previous to me coming into my position here. I do have to call out Dee Knutson because she led quite an amazing effort to bring in one point four million right before I started. So the requested funds would actually close that campaign, which actually I think shows that public-private partnership and the impact we can all have together. And as it relates to the quality of life to improve what we can offer in the city of Sioux Falls.
Awesome, and it's nice to see you for the first time. Welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time?
Any questions for Becky while we got her here? Thanks, Becky.
Thank you.
All right, other questions for any of our partners that might be here tonight on this, this item? All right, not seeing any. Councillor, oh, councillor Erickson, go ahead.
I don't have a question, but just a statement, I guess, before we even move to the motions. But I see a lot of people here from the zoo board and other folks here that are representing the Jacobson family, and then all the directors that have played a part. We all have been involved in great detail with a lot of these things that are put on here. Maybe just by reading a title, you may not be able to understand that this truly is for the city and for all, whether it's the zoo, the River Greenway, streets. We always have to take care of infrastructure. And of course, mental health during a time of COVID, and seeing all the impact that have had physically, mentally, and emotionally on folks. The fact that that one was also council-led and brought forward is a huge investment into our community and just really a seed money that I hope can continue to grow and make a difference. We all like to say we're for mental health, but until we actually start doing something for mental health, we can't say we're for it. We have to do something. And so I'm really proud that this is included in this as well. The inclusive playground and ice ribbon, this playground is like nothing that exists in our community. The, the impact that this will have for folks that have maybe disabilities or other options that, that they can't use the other playgrounds, this certainly is one that will be a destination for all to come to. And then, of course, the Hayward Park Master Plan Improvements. We all know that the Hayward area, part of town, and we know that this is a needed area that does need a park, the splash area. And there's been a lot of people that have seen this vision and the, the leadership of raising two hundred thousand dollars to put towards that as well. And so this list here is what makes Sioux Falls amazing. The public-private partnerships brought forward by everyone to stretch those dollars even that much further are incredible. Now, we do have ten point eight million dollars left and an additional amount coming this year. I, I won't go into great detail, but since it was touched on, just because you don't see it in this list doesn't mean the conversations aren't happening, and it doesn't mean we're not addressing the things, such as housing. Housing has and always will be a challenge. There's a study with the legislature, and there's several of us hosting a roundtable with others. So just because it's not on the list, it's being worked on, just like most things are in this community. And so I would hate to have someone assume that we're not addressing other needs in this community. I, for one, will support this. I feel that I've been involved, is speaking for myself, and am grateful that we were involved early on versus handed a list saying, hey, go do good things and do this. I had an opportunity to, to weigh in, as each and every one of us did. That doesn't always happen. And so the fact that we were able to do that speaks volumes to this administration and hope that we'll continue to do that again as we bring additional funding forward. That continues to come in, and you'll see another list. We just didn't want to race to the checkout line and spend every dime until we knew the exact needs in our community, which we know are great. So thank you for all the public-private partnerships and all those that put time and energy into this, and truly to all my colleagues for asking the tough questions and really holding feet to the fire when we talk about these projects. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor. Councillor Kylie, go ahead.
And, and I don't, do not have any questions, but I do have comments. Some are similar to councillor Erickson's. And I do want to reiterate, one of the last things she stated, every one of us on this council was given a list of what we wanted to identify as priorities, and these are our priorities. This, this is how it worked out. And so you can scoff at that if you wish, but that's how it worked out in this particular case. That's the facts in the matter. The, anytime you can take advantage of a public-private partnership, as we are here, anytime you can invest eleven million dollars and all of a sudden you have a return of a twenty and a half million dollars, that's what's called a no-brainer. That's a pretty darn good return on your investment. So I, I do greatly appreciate the, the individuals within this community that are so willing to give of themselves and, in this case, give of their, their money and support to very good projects. The Jacobson Plaza, as councillor Erickson had stated, in my opinion, this is, addresses the needs of the most vulnerable and what I think are the most neglected individuals in this community. Right now, there is only one ball field, one adapted ball field that's available for people with special needs. This is, is needed, and it was needed many years ago. So thanks to the Jacobsons for the inclusive playground and, and the ice ribbon. It's greatly appreciated. The Hayward Park Master Plan, which I had the opportunity to participate in, again, leadership Sioux Falls has adopted this project, as well as Promising Futures Fund, which was led by Steve Hildebrand. Jan Nicolai played a key role in this as well, too. Again, this addresses the needs of, of the people up in the Northwest that have very little available to them in terms of park amenities. So we're trying to bring equity. One of my goals is to bring equity throughout the, throughout the city, within our park system. This accomplishes that with, with the help of those other individuals. And the, and the Great Plains Zoo exhibit, thank you to Dee Knutson for your support. We, it's, it's something that is a treasure within the city of Sioux Falls, and I, and it is, again, something that all citizens and individuals from outside Sioux Falls can actually participate in and enjoy. River Greenway Design, well, the River Greenway is one of the most popular aspects of the city of Sioux Falls, our bike trail system and greenway. It continually gets high marks from the citizens, and it's, it's still worth investing further in, in further improvements. The arterial streets, our surveys tell us year after year after year, that's the number one area that citizens expect us to invest dollars. So investing dollars in, in this particular, in this project is, is well-founded. And in Operation Hope Fund, that is all councillor Selberg. So talk about council participation, that is all councillor Selberg. And again, a very worthy project. So I will support this item. And again, I greatly appreciate the support from our private partners in this as well, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Selberg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I too, wholeheartedly support all of these projects. And I have really appreciated the conversation that we've been on now for, I think, four to five months. I think we talked about December. I would just say, first of all, councillor Kylie, thank you for that shout-out. I would say that it was not just councillor Selberg. I know that we all talked a bunch as a council, and there was a number of people in the administration and staff, too, that also put in their time and effort and knowledge, and you all pitched in a bunch, and I certainly appreciate it on that. And while I have the microphone for that one particular program, I'm going to continue to tell people what that's about while we can. That is for folks who, if you know anybody out there, and I can't imagine there is anybody who doesn't, who has some problems going on. I'm sure they have before COVID, and we all know that COVID has certainly not helped. It's escalated it. But we're talking about anxiety, depression, addiction, and we're looking for a way to discreetly get people help that they've probably been looking for for quite a while. And I don't think it's all just financial. I think there's probably people, for a number of reasons, who haven't reached for a long time who need it, and we're hoping that this gets people to get out and do that. So we're working out the details as we do that, but I will continue to, and I hope we all do as we move along on that particular portion, spread the word, because I can't, like I say, imagine that there's not a bunch of us who know people who need to reach out, and we need to reach out to them. So thank you again for everybody's help on, in that particular area. But thank you again to everybody for your help on everything. So I wholeheartedly, again, support the program. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Sale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try to hit these things one at a time. The Jacobson Plaza, thank you for the family that's done that. It's an exciting thing to do downtown. The Hayward Park Master Plan, as councillor Kylie said, to put something up in that area that we desperately needed, and it's good that leadership Sioux Falls and Promising Futures are on that. The Great Plains Zoo, I will tell you what, I've long been a supporter of the zoo, and I know that Ian Day were here tonight, just as part of the people. And is probably the only city councillor here that actually worked for CJ Delbridge. I appreciate what has happened there. I might have showed my age a little bit there. Councillor Star. If we go to the River Greenway Design, I will say I should have been an architect if it's going to take a million dollars to do that, but I believe that is vital to us. Streets is always good. Operation Hope, when councillor Selberg called me and explained that he was going to ask for five hundred thousand dollars for mental health, I assumed at that time he was only talking about the city council. But it turns out it's open to all the citizens of Sioux Falls. So please support this as we go forward, because this is only our first step. When the council met with the administration over the past six months to do this, our list is longer than the money we're spending today. And there's more money coming. We're going to be prudent with it. We're going to spend it at the right time, but there's more issues that we're going to deal with. And I do appreciate, and I'm going to call out director Pritchard at this point, thank you so much for keeping me informed with all the questions I've had over the last six months. And you're actually on my speed dial, so I'll keep calling you. So I appreciate it, and I hope the council will support it. And with that, I will move to approve this motion.
We got a second?
Second.
All right, motion by councillor Sale, seconded by councillor Selberg on that. Further discussion from any other councillors here? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Council members Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Move to item fourteen, please.
First reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to enter into a conditional gifting and naming agreement for a future cash gift for the redevelopment of a portion of Falls Park between the city of Sioux Falls and the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. Sponsor, mayor.
Good evening, Don.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members, Don Kearney with Parks and Rec. Tonight is our first reading of a conditional gifting and naming agreement that would allow for the construction of the all-inclusive playground, refrigerated ice ribbon, and associated supports facilities in Falls Park West. Obviously, Sean has talked a little bit about this. We were at your informational several weeks ago and, and walked through this project as well. And this agreement just allows us to affect the things that we've talked about over the last several weeks. This agreement would be between the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation and the city of Sioux Falls. The proposed funding for the project includes up to two million dollars as a gift from the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation, with a proceeds provided by the Gary and Diane Jacobson family. As proposed, the city would contribute another two million dollars towards the project for a total estimated project cost of four million. Some of the key elements of the proposed agreement, including this, includes the city designing, bidding, and constructing the improvements, and that all the parties will agree on the design prior to bidding the project. The city will own and maintain the improvements for the useful life. The useful life has been identified as thirty years or until the replacement fund is depleted, whichever is the longer of the events to occur. And there is a naming condition in the agreement that requires that the project site be named in perpetuity as the Jacobson Plaza at Falls Park. Appropriate naming and recognition for the Jacobsons will be included as part of the project costs. for the Jacobsons will be included as part of the project costs. And what really is truly amazing about this project is the replacement fund that goes along with this project. You know, we do a lot of gifting agreements, as you know. We bring a lot of those forward, but to not only have funds be appropriated and put forward from the private sector to actually make the improvements, but also funds to be able to have a replacement fund, so over time, we can continue to replace that equipment as needed. And so, it's really one of the first of the kind, and I think I would hold this one up as a really special agreement that I think many other agreements going forward could hopefully be modeled after. Just to recap on the timeline for this actual agreement, back in February, we took this proposed gifting agreement and the naming proposal to the Parks and Recreation Board. They unanimously recommended approval of that at their February board meeting. Obviously, we're before you today at first reading, second reading being next week. And then we will launch design this summer. We will start construction in the spring of 2022. And then by the winter of 2022, we plan to have the first ice skate set, the ice ribbon, and have the all-inclusive playground available for everybody in the community to be able to enjoy. I would just be remiss if I didn't close by once again publicly thanking the Jacobsons for the generous gift, to add what I call two first-class amenities to our city's namesake park. I'd also like to thank the Jacobsons again for establishing the maintenance fund. It's certainly, again, going to be a model, hopefully, that we can follow in the future for future gifting agreements. As a general note, as many of you know, the park system has been a huge beneficiary of legacy gifts. As we think back to other legacy gifts in our park system, we think about names like Sherman, McKennon, Keane, Harmonon, Pasley, Kirby, Socha, and many, many more. And with the council's support of this agreement, the Jacobson Plaza at Falls Park will live on again as a legacy gift in our city's park system's history. We do have folks in the audience today, as Sean has mentioned, Robin Howman, Andy Patterson, Jim Wedrick, who are also in the audience tonight to assist us with questions regarding this agreement. So, with that, we'll bring it up to questions.
Yeah, thank you, Don. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item tonight?
Scott Ersmann. I think it's fantastic that somebody wants to donate money to the city for a park, and I certainly, I love the endowment part of it. That's wonderful. You know, something happens, you know, got somebody there for that. I also agree with one of the councillors that there needs to be more stuff done for ADA people in the community. I sometimes wonder, though, why the city is so quick to jump on board with a private donation and just say, "Well, they're giving us this money, so we're going to automatically give our part." What do you think the public thinks of that? Now, this is going to be a great addition, obviously, but it ain't going to really affect a lot of people. Now, the bike trail, which is used by thousands and thousands of people, walking, jogging, biking, all kinds of things, something that I've said for a long time, needs to be 24/7, needs to have solar lighting put in, needs to have two, I've said, two paths, one for walking, jogging, one for biking. This would be a way better way to spend $2 million taxpayer money. And the other tidbit that people don't realize is, unless you are special needs, you will have to pay to use this ice rink. So, yeah, so basically, we're going to take $2 million taxpayer money, your money, and when you get there to use the rink, unless you have special needs, you will have to pay to use it. Bike trail, you know what it costs to use the bike trail? $0, as many of the parks. So, yes, this is why I sometimes scoff at why, the way we spend money, is because we don't spend it appropriately. The COVID money was supposed to go towards certain things. The rules were set out by the federal government. You didn't follow those rules. And number two, there were no public working sessions by this city council that the public could attend to watch you have this discussion of what you wanted to put on that list. I don't remember any. I don't remember any. There's probably behind-the-door meetings, because there's been a lot of those over the past year. So, yes, the public needs to be informed, and you need to follow the rules. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, seeing none. Councillors, you got any questions for Don? Jim is here. Obviously, the family is here.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Jensen.
All right, we'll go to there. A motion by Erickson, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Should we move to any discussion on the council? Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
Yes. First of all, due to what I said earlier regarding the adapted park and the ice ribbon, I'd like to call Director Pritchard forward. It's been stated a couple of times now that we haven't followed the rules with the appropriation of these funds, and I hate to have that go unanswered, so that there's that perception. Would you please address that, Director?
Sure, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about that. It is very confusing in large response, because people associate these with CARES Act and what their appropriate use was. When the funds were made available through the Local Government Assistance Program, there was guidance issued by the Department of Treasury, as well as the state of South Dakota had its own guidance, because the money flowed through them, as to how the funds could be utilized. We had eligible expenses in 2020 that we utilized to draw down the funds. So, the expenses were, for expenses that occurred in 2020, for which we drew these down. These expenses were submitted to the state. I Bailey actually was brought in as a third-party contractor to review the expenses, to ensure that they met the requirements that the state was putting forward. And then ultimately, the state released the funding based on the eligible expenses and all of the receipts that we submitted to them. So, once the funding was received, essentially what happened is it got added to our general fund balance. So, it became, just like any other reserve or cash balances that we have that weren't previously committed or appropriated, carried forward into 2021. And so, those are the, that's the funding that is being utilized for this. Does part of that fund balance derive from the fact that we received some CARES Act dollars? Yes. I mean, we received reimbursement for eligible expenses, but those rules, those requirements, all of that was written by the Department of Treasury. We are liable to making sure that we were meeting those checkpoints, but there was also various checkpoints along the way with people that agreed with both our interpretation. And if people care to read the frequently asked questions that were issued by the Department of Treasury and the rules that they've written, they're certainly available freely to the public, and they can read them off the Treasury website.
Director, thank you for confirming that the funds are being used appropriately and that the i's have been dotted, the t's have been crossed, and this has been cross-checked by others as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. All right, we got a motion, a second, other discussion on this item? Jim, come on up. Yeah, if you have a comment, sure.
Thank you for giving me a few minutes. Jim Wedrick with Woods Fuller Schultz &amp; Smith on behalf of the Jacobson family. I just want you to know that we have, we have had a great relationship with both the Community Foundation and with the City Parks Department, the City Attorney's Office. The negotiation of the agreement that you have before you tonight has been a really cooperative effort, and it got better and better each time that we worked on it, and we're really appreciative of having the opportunity to present it to you. The family's excited, and in a few minutes, if it's okay, I'd like to invite Robin Howman to speak on behalf of the family. There are a couple of comments tonight that were made that I want to respond to, though. First of all, the ice ribbon is a, it's an amenity that we don't really have in this area of the world. There are others in some very large cities, but it's going to be an ice ribbon that is not just water sitting on top of a surface, but it has the plumbing underneath it to keep it frozen for a longer period of time, which will allow really, literally, thousands of people to use it on an annual basis. And the last time I checked, having lived in South Dakota my whole life, is that winter lasts an eternity anyway. The other thing I would mention is, I appreciate the fact that the city does spend a significant amount of time looking at affordable housing. And there was a comment earlier about a different use of these funds. I spent the afternoon at a strategic planning event. I serve on the Sioux Falls Housing and Redevelopment Commission as the chairperson of that commission. And I can tell you that this administration and this time in the life and history of Sioux Falls, we have enormous housing needs, but those needs are not going unnoticed by the city of Sioux Falls, and there's been a great cooperative effort to try and move strategic planning forward to address those. With those comments, I'd like to turn it over to Robin.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, Judge Howman, can you join us up front? I'd like to hear from you as well. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Robin Howman. I'm here solely in my capacity this evening as the daughter of Gary and Diane Jacobson, to speak a little bit about the people who are behind this gift. I'm also joined here tonight by my sister Dawn, by two of the grandchildren, two of the four grandchildren of Gary and Diane, as well as my husband Chris. My parents were raised in two very different worlds. My mother was raised in the small town of Summit, South Dakota, by both her parents. Her father was a banker, and her mother was a baker. My father was raised in Sioux Falls by his divorced mother, who often worked double shifts as an RN to support her children. Although their backgrounds were very different, the life lessons that they learned in their youth brought them to the same values. My mother learned about giving to others through her father, who served everyone in Summit as the town's elder statesman and lay minister, and her mother, who at the time of her death was the longest-serving school board member in South Dakota history. My father learned about giving because this community helped raise him, and his sister by providing meals and jobs and guidance. My parents met on their first day of their first class as freshmen down at the University of South Dakota. My father was one of a gang of boys from Washington High School who came into English 101 at Old Main. Think Grease in your mind. Rather than sit with his gang of boys in the back, he saw a pretty young girl sitting in the front, and he decided to sit next to her. And she happened at that time to be the second woman ever admitted to USD's business school. They married in 1966 and made Sioux Falls their home. They had no money and, at the time, a young daughter and big dreams. Fifty years ago this March, about three months prior to my arrival, they received a small loan from family and bought Malloy Electric on a contract for deed. Until my mother's retirement a few years ago, they worked side by side every day as partners in life and in love, using their particular talents to grow a business and a family. Because of the tremendous support they received from so many in this community, they began to give back. At first, with their time serving on boards at schools and banks, community organizations or hospitals, the Minnehaha County Commission, they wanted to pay their blessings forward. When they were able to do so financially, their first major endeavor was to establish a scholarship for single mothers who were going to nursing school that had no grade point requirement. They wanted to make sure that single mothers could make a better life for their families. Their efforts continued financially to the Sanford Children's Hospital, the YMCA, First Congregational Church, and the Ark of Dreams, to name a few. Over the last decade, they've made a distinct effort to make giving a part of our entire family through the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. I can speak again for my sister who's here, the grandchildren, and my husband, and the two grandchildren who aren't here, that our favorite time of year and some of our best family members' memories are when we come together individually and present and collectively select charities and projects that we will support as a family each year. Jacobson Plaza at Falls Park would be the capstone of their lifetime. They want this effort to support everyone in this community, those who are young and those who are not so young, those who are able and those who have different abilities. Something new and unique for our community, to bring our community together in new ways. They want to continue to support this gift long into the future as a way to give back to the community that has given us so much as a family and others, to continue to make Sioux Falls the best place anywhere. Thank you for letting me be here.
Thank you, Judge Howman. Appreciate you and your family being here. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or any questions, other questions? The council, may I have Counselor Erickson?
Goosebumps. I have absolute goosebumps from you speaking and the impact that this will make, as well as truly, you know, I've known your family for a long time, and they've quietly given with very little recognition most times, and to have something of this magnitude downtown to live on forever and grow, and your kids and your grandkids can come back to, as well as the whole entire community can be a part of, I think that this is an incredible opportunity. And so, thank you again. Public-private partnerships are what make this community the best, and so I appreciate your words and am very excited for this particular project. If any of you have been to downtown Rapid City, you will see their downtown ice rink. I mean, it's almost annoying, because you can't get on it. There's so many people there. There's people waiting in line for their turn. It reminds me of Chicago, because there's a line to wait until they kick you off when it's your turn, and I envision this to be something that will live on forever like that as well. So, thank you again for the vision for your family and your entire family. So, thank you.
Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you so much for sharing that story. Goosebumps for sure. Thanks for the contribution. I love that line, "Your parents came to town with no money and big dreams." It's a way to start out while they're starting a family. So, they put their faith in this city and a lot of contribution to it, too. So, thank you again. That was just a terrific, terrific story. Thanks.
All right, I think we're ready to take a vote on this item. Denise?
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Thank you, guys, for being here. We'll move on to item 16, please.
15?
Item 15. I'm sorry. Yes, 15.
First reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations to fund the Parks and Recreation Aquatics Program. Parks, $250,000. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 20, 2021. Sponsored, Mayor.
Hey, Don.
Hi. Good evening again. Well, first of all, thanks for consideration of this proposal today. Certainly appreciate that. As we shared with you last week, we've had some hiring challenges this spring, and part of the challenge, you know, we've typically always challenged to be able to hire seasonal employees. It's just an ongoing effort, but this is particularly more challenging this year for a variety of different reasons. First and foremost, obviously, due to COVID, you know, we made the right decision, I think, not to bring on all the seasonal employees, because there was a lot of unknowns at that time, and it certainly was the right thing to do at the time. But unfortunately, a byproduct of that is that a lot of those people that we would normally hire to fill those roles are now gone and found unemployment elsewhere, and they certainly should have done that. Don't fault them for that at all. However, one of the other things that we're looking at across the city and our HR and finance teams took a pretty good deep dive into looking at seasonal and part-time salaries across the city and across all the city departments, and really felt like one of the recommendations moving forward will be upward movement in Parks and Recreation-related salaries. A lot of the other departments are in pretty good shape, it appears, but certainly there's some movement that we probably need to make going forward, so we can recruit and retain our employees. While that process was focused on the 2022 budget, the supplemental really would advance some of those recommendations that would likely have come forward as part of our 2022 budget. One of the other factors that's really changed over the last five or 10 years, when I first got to Sioux Falls, you literally couldn't work for us unless you could commit to 40 hours a week. If you couldn't work 40 hours a week and probably teach lessons in the morning, probably not a candidate for us. Well, now, that takes two or three people to fill that same position. What used to take one person now takes two or three for a variety of different reasons. A lot of our folks are very active in extracurricular activities. You know, they're not five and six people and kids and families like there was back in the day. And so, it's just a different environment where they were living in. And the other thing... And the other thing, obviously, is we're blessed with a very low unemployment rate here in Sioux Falls. That's a really good thing, but at the same time, when you're looking for people, that makes it very difficult. So, the reason why we advanced this supplemental appropriation was that, you know, we felt like there was some risk of not being able to get all of our pools open by May 28th, when the date that we're targeting to open for the summer. And given the fact they weren't open last year, we didn't want a repeat of last year, and we wanted pools in their entirety to be opening. So, right now, we have about 50 lifeguard positions that we still need to fill, thanks to the mayor's efforts and going on Facebook and really a lot of the advertising, really starting to get more applications in. So, thank you, Mayor, for that, and thanks for spreading the word. They're starting to come in, but, you know, salaries are a problem for us to be able to be competitive. The other thing I'd share with you is that we open in six weeks, and lifeguards are in the pools in four, for emergency operations training, learning the rotations, especially with a lot of new fresh faces that we're likely to have. And then typically, we also kind of keep a pool of substitute lifeguards that can kind of fill voids. If somebody gets sick or ill or whatever it might be, we've got, we normally have about 20 by this time on. We've got two right now. Not a huge pool of hours for us, but it's a nice little backup for us, and those that do those substitute lifeguard positions like the extra money. What's more is that these individuals, unlike a lot of other facilities, they require certifications, as you all know, and in most cases, we hire most of them conditionally, subject to them being able to get certified. And so, obviously, that takes a little time, takes a little effort on their part, but also know that not everybody gets certified. You know, there's some screening tests that have to happen. You have to be able to swim. You have to be able to have some stamina, and so not everybody gets certified. And so, while wage increases may not be, you know, the complete silver bullet for our hiring challenges, it does make us much more competitive as an employer, and so anything you can do to help us be a little more competitive by offering another dollar to $2 per hour for those positions in the aquatics area, as well as some of the other hard-to-fill positions. The other two I would mention are pool maintenance as well, as well as athletic field maintenance. It's not an eight-to-five schedule. You're working weekends. You're working early mornings, late evenings, and so they're just harder to fill because of those reasons. So, with your support, I think we can get there and get all of our pools open. We're working hard to make it happen, but this would really help us if we could have the supplemental appropriation. So, glad to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Don. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item tonight?
Scott Ersmann. I've often said that the, I mean, Don touched on it. I knew what this was about. Nobody wants to work for the city for $12 an hour. I've often said that the structure of the city, employment, seasonal workers, temp workers, full-time workers, directors, managers, it's a corporate structure, because you know we should run a city like a business, which is complete bull crap. And if you look at the structure of the city, the directors and the management are making corporate-sized wages. This is not a for-profit business. We collect taxes. We give services. But they're getting paid like executives. And then there's another layer underneath that, middle management, and they're getting an atrocious amount of money to basically take orders from the ones that are getting way more atrocious amount of money. Instead of doing an appropriation, I just think I could give you guys a list of four people you could just get rid of in middle management, and you'd have the money to pay these workers. And to them specifically, as Don touched on, yeah, you aren't paying enough. You haven't been paying the seasonal workers enough for a long time. They can go make a taco for $3 an hour more. $12 an hour to be a lifeguard, people who are trained, need certification. I don't care if they're a teenager or not. They need to pass tests. They need to have certifications, and they're there to save people's lives. And we're paying them $12 an hour? We've been doing this a long time. All seasonal workers should start at least at $15 an hour with the city. And like I said, it's a corporate structure. It reminds me of Amazon. Pay all the people at the top gobs and gobs of money, and you pay the pickers on the below barely nothing. So, I've said for a long time, the city needs a structured way to look at the wages. Nobody should make more than the mayor. Nobody. He should be the top-paid executive with the city, and everybody under that accordingly. And we should get rid of a lot of middle management, and we should start paying the people who actually do the work in the city, who fill the potholes, who run the fire trucks, who drive the cop cars, mow the lawns, and our lifeguards a good wage, so they're not going off to a taco shop. Thanks.
Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right. We'll move. Any questions that anyone may have for Director Kearney on this item? Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
Thank you. Director, if you can help fill us in, because I know that you'd sent out an email earlier, and you'd mentioned what the current wage is for our lifeguards in particular, and what you'd like to bump them up to. Can you let us know how you arrived at that increase?
Yeah. Our current lifeguards make $11.50 an hour. We're working with Sean's team as well and Bill's team as well, but we're looking at, you know, really potentially a $2 increase to $13.50 for those positions, and then some of the other positions that aren't as critical, a dollar additional. For example, our pool maintenance folks make $10.50 an hour. This would increase them to $11.50 an hour. And then, as we alluded to in the email, we're looking at a more comprehensive approach that Sean and HR are really looking at to present to you in your 2022 budget, because it's a pretty good lift, as you can see with the dollar amount we have today. But I know, long-term, we're working on a plan for the 2022 budget that would further address seasonal wages within Parks and Rec.
It's been a while since I was 18 years old, out looking for a job, going around to the different businesses, the fast-food restaurants or what have you. How competitive is $13.50 with a job that they could get at McDonald's or Burger King or down at the mall?
Well, I think it gets us very much more competitive than at $10.50 or at $11.50. It certainly helps. You know, we do a lot of things with bonuses, with reimbursement certifications, and so we really help in addition to just the base wage. But it certainly helps, and whether that where we end up with, with what's proposed for the 2022 budget or not, you know, remains to be seen. But I know there's a concerted effort on the administration's part to do what we need to do to remain competitive.
Well, I'm going to say right up front that I do support this, but I am wondering if it's, quite frankly, if it is enough. To get your WSI, your Water Safety Instruction Certification, you work your tail off to get that, and you're exactly right. There's a large portion of individuals that start that certification process that don't make it through to the end. And when you look at the responsibilities that they have, there's probably no other seasonal worker that has greater responsibilities than our lifeguards, teaching lessons, a lifelong activity to individuals that don't know how to swim, teach them how to swim, and looking after and protecting their lives throughout the time that the public is in the pool. A great deal of responsibility there, so I'm wondering if it actually shouldn't be more. And I'm not anybody's agent. I'm not representing anybody here, you know, that's out there that's got their WSI, but just, I hope this helps, but I'd be prepared to even up the ante sum if necessary.
I appreciate the support. I actually have a situation that just happened today. We had an interview going on with an employee that said, "Yeah, I'd like to come to work with you, but I only want to do it part-time." Learned about the meeting tonight where we're going to be talking about seasonal wages. She not only switched from part-time to full-time, but she just said, "I'm in," you know, and it's so, at least in that one individual situation, it did make a difference, because the more we can get that will work 40 hours versus, you know, the 20 hours a week, that certainly helps us, fewer number of bodies to process through payroll. It helps in just so many regards. So, I do think it'll help, and I appreciate your support.
I'm glad to hear that. I think this is a start, but I don't think it should be the end of the process either. Thank you.
Counselor Knightzer, and then Counselor Selberg.
I would echo what Counselor Kylie said. I definitely support this, but I'm open to, if there's an analysis done and we need to tweak a little bit even more, let's talk about it. We should be competitive, and we should set an example in the city. And we've done a few wage studies in the last several years. I don't know if any of them, though, took a look at part-time or any of that. I mean, obviously, we can probably do that internally, but you can always get somebody to do a quick, you know, market analysis, you know, like where I work, they always use what they call market reference points and market analysis to look to make sure, and they do that annually, to make sure that they're still competitive, you know, and they're not getting too far out. And so, that would be a very prudent thing to do, and I hope we can do that, and if we find out it's a little more, let's talk.
Sounds great. Thank you.
How short are we as of today for lifeguards? You said like there's been a little bit of a push and some gain on it.
Well, it's a fluid document. I know we've got like 23 additional interviews set up already. We've got classes set up for certification. As of the last time I looked, we had 50 openings, and, you know, to be honest and be fair about it too, is that, you know, we enter the season maybe not 100%. You know, there's just this process that, of getting certified, getting trained. So, we go into it knowing that we're going to need some additional people, but we, when we saw, we're reading the tea leaves a little bit, you know, a week or two ago, we thought, we're not on pace where we should be. So, that's really what prompted this.
And when you get certified, what's the cost to it, and are you reimbursed?
Yes, you are reimbursed for the certification, and we do take care of that for you. A lifeguard is $185, and we do reimburse that.
Okay. How long does it take to get certified?
For lifeguards, it's seven to eight hours of online work and 15 to 20 hours of in-person work, actually in the pool, doing drills, that kind of stuff, testing out. WSI is even more.
Okay. Well, I'm certainly in support of doing all we can to get the staff up. I get asked about the pools and summer recreation activities all the time, so certainly vital. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other questions for Counselor, or for Don? Go ahead, Counselor Starr.
Thank you, Director Kearney. I guess that's my question that, a little bit to follow up on Counselor Selberg's question, but do we guarantee them that they're going to get reimbursed for it, or do we pay them for the time of going through the certification process, or do we make all the burden on them, and if they don't pass, then they're stuck? I get that you want to motivate someone to be there, but you're asking them to commit to 40 hours of work to go through the certification process roughly, and you may get reimbursed at the end if you don't, because we know it's a strenuous process, and there are some that drop out. I guess I'm just wondering, do we pay them for the time that they invest to become certified?
We don't pay them for their actual certification, because sometimes they go get certified at MB, or they'll get certified at another venue. And so, once they become certified and they work for us, because we don't want to certify all the lifeguards in the community on the city taxpayer rolls, only to find out that they took a position somewhere else. So, as long as they work for us and they fulfill their commitment of working for us, we will reimburse them.
I just, I think it's great that we've finally gotten to the point that it matters what we pay people. So, I think that we're making that step forward, that it's amazing how we've decided that it's wages that are really holding us back as a community, not only in your program but across the city. I talked to businesspeople all week long that have been talking about that they've had to raise their pay too to be competitive. So, we're finally, maybe it's a buyer's market for employees for once, rather than how cheap we can hire people and how we can use people to do that. So, I'm glad that we're willing to step up and actually pay people for the services that they provide. I think that's what's gotten us, it's what's gotten the community in trouble in the past because we don't pay people enough, and then we see people who have criminal records, and we just see some bad things when we're not investing in keeping our kids safe. So, I think this is really something that I can strongly support. So, thank you.
Any other questions for Don, the counsel on this item?
Approve.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen to approve item 15 here. Any final discussion on the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Jensen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, I just want to say thank you for getting the pools open this year. It's a big step for our kids in the summer, and it's going to be a big opportunity for our young people to have a summer like they used to have. So, thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being open and transparent on your Facebook and actually calling people to action, doing something positive in the world. Thank you for that. Thank you, and you'll have my support.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Final discussion here?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Brecky, go ahead.
I also want to, you know, thank the Parks Department for bringing this issue forward. I think it's really critical that we get our pools open, not only this year, but it's been an ongoing issue for a long time, but I think as on a go-forward basis, you know, we just need to do whatever it takes to keep those activities available for our young people, and, you know, when it's pools, it's all ages. I do want to just take this opportunity to make just a statement and a possible suggestion to the park director. When I owned Honey Baked Ham, I found that there was an underutilization really in the business community in the special abilities area, and that I actually was a winner of the Simon Award for utilization of special abilities. I call them kids, but young adults, you know, in my business. And I think we underestimate often the talents that they bring to the table as employees, and I utilize Volunteers of America and McCrossin Boys Ranch for all of my holidays. For any of you that over the years may have bought a Honey Baked Ham, they were largely glazed during the holidays, Easter, Thanksgiving and Christmas by the boys from McCrossin and Volunteers of America. I don't know how well that might work for you in the Parks Department on the lifeguarding, but in those maintenance responsibilities, those jobs that need just a 20 hours here or a weekend work, they're fabulous. And what I was able to utilize them for was that just temporary employee during those, you know, two weeks before each of those holidays, and they came with job coaches to help perform their activities. And so, I would just suggest you reach out to some of those entities. I think you'd be surprised. I know McKennan, and I think Sanford have found that they can be an extremely valuable employee. They come with the kind of enthusiasm you can't even believe, and their dedication is just like no other. So, in many ways, they were some of the best employees I ever had. And I always, after the, some of them got so good that I always had at least two full-time, full-permanent part-time employees in my store, and they always amazed me. I learned to never limit them because they would always shock me at how far they could, how much more they could perform than I would, you know, perhaps think that they could. So, I would just throw that out there, and I'm on a pedestal a little bit here, but I just think that there's an opportunity in the Parks Department for that, to might fill an area for you, might plug a hole for you in park maintenance across the board, not only on the pool side, but in general. But I will be voting for this, and I thank you for bringing it forward.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Any final discussion here? All right. Let's take a vote on this one. Denise?
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. We'll move to item 16, please.
First reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement for use of public parking facilities with Sioux Falls to FGF LLC. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 20, 2021. Sponsored Mayor.
Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, Matt Nelson, Public Parking Facilities Manager. So, this is a lease we're bringing forward to go, they currently lease month-to-month in this lot, and they want to go long-term on this lease, and it has to come to the council for approval because it is over one year. The basics of the lease, it's a 28-parking space lot. It is located at 320 South First Avenue. It's in between Ace Hardware and Carroll Institute downtown. They currently pay the market rate of $60 per month. They will continue to pay that market rate of $60 per month per space, so it's $16.80 monthly. The lease would begin June 1, and it would terminate July 31 of 2027. There will be 4% annual increases that will happen in January of each year, and that's pretty much the entire lease, pending any questions.
All right. Thanks, ma'am. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here? Counselors, you got any questions for Matt on this one?
Move to approve.
Second.
That was a tie. Who was that? Was that Counselor Kylie with the second there? Okay.
Jinx.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Mike Kylie to move that to a second reading.
Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie, to move that to a second reading on Tuesday,
April twenty. Is there a discussion, counsel, on this? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item seventeen, please.
A resolution amending the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five capital program to add drones and a tractor loader in twenty twenty-one. Police eighteen thousand, entertainment venues, event centers, seventy-five thousand. Sponsor, Mayor.
Good evening, Sean.
Good evening again. This is a fairly straightforward capital amendment, but it is to add two items to the capital program. The first is an eighteen thousand dollars for a police drone. The second is seventy-five thousand dollars for a tool cat that will be used out at the Entertainment Center complex. Both items do not require an additional appropriation of funds. They're strictly, they're being, funding will come from equipment savings that were achieved in other areas, so it just adds it to the capital program, so they can move forward with acquiring those items.
All right. Thanks, Sean. Anyone from the public here to speak on these items tonight?
Scott Ersmann. Would have been nice to have seen some kind of presentation, maybe not at an informational, but something online, like a video from CityLink or something, to know what we exactly were going to use these drones for. There has been a lot of communities that have used enforcement agencies who have used them, misused them, to spy on people and do some stuff that's not necessary. So it'd be nice, maybe, I know that the police have a YouTube show, CityLink show, that they talk about different things going on. It'd be nice for them to actually give us a demonstration of what the drones are going to be used for. Now, I know that they use them already, I think, in the planning department, I believe, to survey land and stuff, and that's wonderful, but I would really like to know how nine-thousand-dollar drones are going to be used, because that's a pretty hefty chunk of money for a drone when considering you can get a pretty advanced one for about five hundred dollars. Thanks.
Great. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? All right. Look for a motion.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor Erickson.
We had our end of year. Will this money come out of the CIP that's left over from last year? Is that how we're funding it, or how are we doing this?
No, they have funding that's still available, so it may be that they had an item of equipment that they had budgeted for this year that they've acquired, and it came in for less than what it is. So this doesn't, this is strictly within the approved appropriation already.
Gotcha. And then did you say?
And I'll comment, it is two drones. I misspoke earlier.
Okay. Did you say tool cat or snow cat?
It's tool cat, and I had to ask what it is, but essentially, it's a utility vehicle, a small utility vehicle that's utilized. We have one that's existing. The maintenance on it apparently is becoming excessive and too expensive. It's time for it to be replaced.
Not to be confused with the snow cat groomer. Right. Okay. Just making sure. Thank you. I'll make a motion, move to approve.
Second, Kylie.
Okay. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to approve item seventeen. Is there a discussion on this tonight? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
That passes. We'll move on to item eighteen, please.
A resolution approving the release of a permanent easement located in that part of Vacated Alley lying adjacent to lots one through eighteen, block twenty-three of Dennis subdivisions of blocks nine, ten, twenty-three, and twenty-four, University Addition to Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, private applicants, Augustana University.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Travis Larson with the City of Sioux Falls Engineering Department. Item eighteen is to release a permanent utility easement that remains between Vacated Twenty-Eighth Street and Vacated Twenty-Ninth Street, as well as Vacated Mellow and Waltz on the Augustana College campus, excuse me. Augustana College has requested to have this released due to expansion, a building expansion they're looking at. All utility companies have been contacted for this release, and we had no issues concerning that, and so engineering is requesting your support and approval on that.
All right. Thanks, Travis. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, any questions for Travis here? Move approval?
Second.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson to approve item eighteen. Any discussion amongst the council? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Item nineteen, please.
A resolution of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, correcting the legal descriptions of Resolution Number Six Twenty-One.
Hey, Travis.
Evening again. This resolution is to correct a previously approved Resolution Six dash twenty-one that was approved on January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. At the Register of Deeds office, an error was found in a legal description requiring us to bring a correction resolution forward to council to amend this so it can be filed correctly.
All right. Thanks, Travis. Anyone from the public like to speak on this? Counselors, any questions here? Move approval?
Jensen.
Second. Neitzert?
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Neitzert. To approve, any discussion here? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yep.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. On to item twenty, please.
A resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members through certain citizen boards. Scott Vandermeulen for Infrastructure Review Advisory Board, IRAB, and Mark Kaufman, Solid Waste Planning Board.
All right. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to these items? All right, counselors, can I get a motion to approve these two gentlemen?
Move to approve.
Second, Neitzert.
Motion by Kylie, seconded by Neitzert on this item. Let's take a vote to approve these two, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Counselors, we got any new business to bring forward tonight? All right, we'll move on to general public input. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, so we'd like to invite anyone up for general public input.
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. Actually wanted to come and talk to us about this during the joint meeting, but that lasted about five minutes. Couldn't make it here in time. Anyway, panhandling. And this goes back to open government, has a lot to do with open government. Maybe you guys are having discussions of how you're going to handle this. Maybe you're not. Maybe the police are having discussions of how they're going to handle this, maybe they're not. I don't know. I don't hear anything. Dead silence. And I used to think that it was just a problem of my neighborhood, but the news is actually starting to cover this lately. It's everywhere. They're everywhere. Now, I'm not stupid. I realize that punishing the panhandler, you're not going to get anywhere. They're going to be back there the next day. They're not going to pay their fines. It's not going to accomplish anything. They have mental illness, they have addiction problems, that's obvious, that's why they're out there. I have suggested it would even take a change in city ordinance. Anytime you have a troubled area, you put up a big sign, don't give to panhandlers, causes traffic issues, that's against the law. And make, I told a Fred who does this, I said, put a can on the seat of your car, and every time you feel tempted to give to a panhandler, put the money in the can, and at the end of the month, go take it to a charity. I said, tell you what the panhandlers are doing with the money. Happens in my neighborhood all summer long, actually happened all winter long. They sit out there in the morning, they get their money, they walk over to Get and Go at Fourteenth and Cliff, they go load up on malt liquor, they get drunk, they pass out, and then the next day they do it all again. That's what you're doing when you give them money. Don't give them money. Give it to a charity. But the city needs to act, too. We need, besides the trash center, which is good, we need to put something in place to get people to stop giving the money. And like I said, you might be talking about it, but I haven't heard anything. It's what I said earlier. You might have had discussions on things, but you're not having them in open. Get feedback from the public. There is people I've talked to who've been working with the homeless and some of those organizations for decades, and I've asked them, has anyone came and talked to you about this situation? No. Nobody. You need to get input on this. You need to get a task force put together on this, and it needs to be all public and open meetings, and we need to take care of it. They panhandled all year long this year. It's the first year in, since I've lived here since ninety-one, it's the first year I saw somebody zero degrees panhandling. Let's get a handle on it.
Anyone else for general public input tonight? Come on up.
Greetings. I'm David Zokitis, and I'm here to address the issue of having police in schools. Typically, we call police officers in schools resource officers, and I'm just kind of wondering if they're helpful to schools, helpful to police, and helpful to students. So if you think about it for a little while, here are some of the potential impacts of having an officer in a school. Maybe they'll reduce crime, you know, stopping things, or maybe they'll actually increase crime by criminalizing normal adolescent behavior. You know, back in the old days, if two boys got into a fight, no big deal. Would they go to jail if they have a cop in the school? Good question. And, you know, maybe having police in schools helps to connect students, helps to connect police and students to build some, you know, community connection. I went to minnehaha county dot org and looked at their program, and they have these kind of nice schools. Seems pretty handy. Seems helpful. I wanted to know what the Sioux Falls Police Department had to say on it, so I had a nice chat with Lieutenant Jason Leach, and they're really interested in safety, want to try to reduce crime and that kind of stuff, build camaraderie. And then I wanted to get a little bit of community input into this kind of program, so I asked an online question, but much to my surprise, the community response that I received on this particular site was ambivalent to critical. Nobody liked it whatsoever. And somebody mentioned this particular reference, you can leave those points there, but apparently, at least in Sioux Falls, that you have nurses and psychologists in schools in addition to the occasional police officer. Something to think about is whether or not you like to talk to your boss's boss.